Mr. President, you have a quorum.
Quorum has been established. We now like to take report of action taken in closed session. Trustee Brown.
At tonight's closed session, the Board voted to approve the appointment of the following public employee contracts which are subject to contractual agreement by the Chancellor. Recommendation to appoint Leela Selhey as interim president of instruction Laney College from July 1st, 2014 through June 30th, 2015, or until the position is filled on a regular basis at $139,050 annually. That was unanimous, all in favor. Recommendation to extend the assignment of Eric Gravenberg as interim president, College of Alameda, from June 30th, 2014 through August 30th, 2014, at $175,100 annually. All in favor unanimously. Recommendation to extend the assignment of Inger Stark as interim vice president, College of Alameda, from June 30th, 2014 through June 18th, 2014, at $133,900 annually. All in favor unanimously. Recommendation to extend the assignment of Roxanne Rivas as interim director of Trio SSS Laney College from June 17th, 2014 until the incumbent returns to the permanent position at $92,700 annually. All in favor unanimously. Recommendation to extend the assignment of Karen Engel as interim director of Workforce and Economic Development District Office from June 30th, 2014 through October 30th, 2014, or until the position is filled on a regular basis at $144,200 annually. All in favor unanimously. If these individuals are present, please stand up so that we can welcome you into your new positions.[131.19][131.19](APPLAUSE).
Thank you. We now move on to the approval of the agenda, and I'd like to have approval with the agenda, and we will be removing item number 31 from the agenda.
Upgrade.
The upgrade amount of item number 31 has been changed to... Item number 31 is Consider Approval Amendment Number 1 to Agreement for Construction Management Services with Civil Group Inc., DBA, SGI Construction Management for the Library Phase 2, Electrical and Chilled Water Infrastructure Upgrades, and the Building A Heating Upgrade Projects at Merritt College. That amount has been changed to $39,300, from $39,300 to $34,000. In addition, item number 33 has been pulled from the agenda. That's the under informational items, creation of a permanent deputy chancellor position and reorganization of management structure. Without objection, I'd like to ask the Board for approval.
So moved.
Seeing a motion to a second and approve. All those in favor?
Aye.
No, an opposed motion passes. At this point in time, we'd like to move to a ceremonial part of tonight's agenda meeting, and we'd like to actually first start off by thanking our student trustees, Sharon Clegg and student trustee Wiley, who have served for the last year as student trustees representing the needs and interests of our students. I wanted to read this resolution to both of you that's being presented here tonight. Peralta Community College District Resolution honoring Wiley and Sharon Clegg. Whereas the Peralta Community College District Board of Trustees strives to honor those providing distinguished service, providing distinguished and dedicated service to the district, and wishes to recognize the exemplary service of Wiley and Sharon Clegg, whereas Wiley and Sharon Clegg had been Peralta Community College District student trustees since 2003, now therefore be resolved that the Peralta Community College District Board of Trustees honors student trustees Wiley and Sharon Clegg for their many accomplishments and dedicated services to the district. Congratulations trustees, and thank you so much for your service on behalf of the Board.[290.02][290.02](APPLAUSE). I would like to just invite the trustees, if you have any comments before you leave, and what your plans are next, certainly I'd like to entertain that. Trustees.
Well, for me, tonight is a bittersweet moment. After serving two years with the seven incredible minds, I have learned so much. I just want to say thank you for not just the incredible minds on the Board, but I want to say thank you to all of you, including the Chancellor, General Counsel Twee, Brenda, you've been amazing working with me, I thank you for that. And also, all of, like, I want to say thank you to the presidents, the vice presidents, the administration, especially the students who were the ones who voted me into office. It's been an incredible experience for me. I've traveled and was able to meet and work with established delegates in the White House. I've met Nancy Pelosi, and I've been working with her on various student issues. I've worked with Barbara Lee on different issues. And I just want to say to Linda Handy, for, trustee Handy I should say, excuse me, for your mentorship, your leadership, and your friendship. And for me, I will be moving on... It's like a graduation moment for me. I am so happy because I will be continuing my education at Mills College. My major is business administration, and I will be getting my bachelor's next June, and also I will be entering into the MBA program. So that is my goals, and that is my plan, and that is what I will be doing. So I will be moving forward and working with other organizations this far as educating younger children to come up, to let them know how important education is, because education is power. And I just want to thank all of you for all of your assistance that you've given me and all of your leadership. Thank you so much.[501.12][501.12](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, trustee Clegg. Trustee Wiley, would you like to share some comments?
Yeah, thank you for everyone, and thank you for Chancellor, thank you for General Counsel, thank you for Brenda, and thank you for the... Sorry. But, yeah, okay. Yes, thank you for all the trustee, and thank you for all four college presidents, vice presidents, administration to help all the students, and also a real thank you for our trustee president, Abell. And why? Because I want to be a community leader in the future. And I know you're running a position, I see you are doing great. So the great thing is, you want to be great because you have someone next to you that are doing great, right? And also, thank you for General Counsel to tell me about some story about the law school. Before, I'm not very confident to apply the law school or apply some school, and I applied Stanford this year, but unfortunately I didn't get in, but on the waiting list, so I just want to retry next year. But sometime you have the waiting list up, and you maybe try to somewhere else. For, my plan is keep retry my dream school for next year, and also to, to, I think it's weird, because I'm already taking some LSAs class right now, and to want to be an outstanding lawyer in the future, I want to open some non-profit program for provide our community some legal support. Because when we talk about the law, we always talk about so, the high free, everything about the advice or about the paperwork. So I think it's for the non-profit, it's good for everyone, especially what I'm thinking about the Peralta Community College. We always, the first thing is we're thinking about is affordable price to pay for the college, to help us to get in the future, to get a better job, to achieve a higher education in the future. So the more support for our community is my dream, and I'm go on the road, and I want to be successful community leader in the future. That's what I learned from the community college, that's what I learned from Peralta Community College, from everyone, and thank you for everyone.
Thank you. Thank you, Wiley, and I think we, we think that you already are a successful community leader. Thank you both for your service so much to the Board. We really appreciate it. Thank you. At this time, we're going to move on to the swearing and ceremony for incoming trustees. If I can ask trustee...
Mr. President?
Yes?
Do we carry the minutes?
Have not carried the minutes yet. Thank you for pointing that out. The next item is approval of the minutes. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
A move then seconded by trustee Riley. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Next item is swearing and ceremony for incoming student trustees.
Test, test. Thank you. If you could raise your right hand, each of you, and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Jeremy Rowley.
Could hold up the mic. Both of you at the same time, hold up the mic. Let's start over. I state your name.
I, Jeremy Rowley.
Do solemnly swear to carry out my responsibilities.
Do solemnly swear to carry out my responsibilities.
As student trustee of the Peralta Community College District.
As student trustee of the Peralta Community College District.
I do personally commit myself to convey...
I do personally commit myself to convey...
...the concerns of the student body of the Board of Trustees...
The concerns of the student bodies of the Board of Trustees.
...to the Board of Trustees, and to convey the concerns of the Board of Trustees to the student body.
To convey the concerns of the student bodies of the Board of Trustees.
(LAUGH) To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations, you're now student trustees.
Thank you.[845.93][845.93](APPLAUSE).
Okay, now we move on to the next item on the agenda. Welcome trustees Carl Oliver and Jeremy Rowley, welcome to the Board. Forward to work with both of you. We now move on to the next item, public communication. Trustee Brown.
We have, for the speaker cards that we've received are Mary Trimble Norris, Reverend Cheryl Ward, Bert Dragon, Matthew Goldstein, and Louis Quindlin... Oh, yeah, Louis Quindlin.
I'm Mary Trimble Norris, and I'm sitting in my time to pastor for... Thank you.
Reverend Cheryl Ward from the East Bay Coalition for Change. Like to read a letter addressed to, specifically to trustee chairperson Geyen, and to the rest of trustees. Last month at the Peralta Board of Trustees meeting, the East Bay Coalition for Change, many other community groups and individuals were present en masse to protest the unjust treatment of Dr. Elnora Webb, president of Laney College, and the possible non-renewal of her employment contract. During the previous month, several of us called, wrote letters, emails, and signed petitions expressing our disdain of the circumstances and our overwhelming support for Dr. Webb. The Board partially responded to the public acknowledgement of her excellent work by renewing her contract for one year. However, during that meeting, as chair of the meeting, you allowed the BAM group with over 20 speakers to use excessively inflammatory and derogatory language that was directly insulting and highly disrespectful of President Elnora Webb. As chairperson of the Board, it was your responsibility to proclaim that they were out of order, that such speech and language would not be tolerated during public forum, and to ask them to refrain. Finally, we requested that some type of corrective action be directed towards or admonished, be levied on Chancellor Jose Ortiz for his unprecedented and highly egregious actions towards President Webb and the entire contract debacle. As we have focused more attention on and held numerous discussions about Peralta and the actions of Chancellor Ortiz, we have discovered a pattern of behavior and misguided judgment on his part that suggests he may not be the right fit for our district in terms of competence, perspective, local awareness, and community consideration. Some of his decision-making and action examples we have identified include the attempt to put an abrupt stop to major district initiatives, such as the capital bond program, in a manner that could expose Peralta to significant legal actions and substantial delays of projects already underway, and the promotion to director levels of personnel who prior to these promotions never held any management positions. Further, it is our understanding that the Peralta District may be in jeopardy of violating the legal public accountability requirements of its current bond in that if there is a current citizens advisory committee, it is not met in a very long time as mandated, and the further mandated annual report has not been issued. Further, as we dialogue with others, additional problems continue to come to light, such as Peralta vendors who are not consistently paid on time, that historical and successful programs for challenged student populations are being ignored and thus allowed to languish, and that money has been thrown down a rat hole to first bring in out-of-state consultants to give the illusion of changing the district's culture, only to have their services stopped well before a majority of their required services have been delivered, yet they still were paid the full amount of their contract. Unfortunately, it now appears that the Board continues to not pay close attention to the precarious positions in which he seems to repeatedly place the district, as well as ignore the voice of the community, as you now consider at this month's meeting, the renewal of his contract. Your inactions give him license to treat certain Peralta's administrators other than those he favors with utter disregard. We as a community do not understand why a chancellor of a community college has been given free rein to try and undermine the shared governance policies and culture that has been a hallmark of this district. Is this what we ought to expect in his new contract years? We continue to pose relevant and extremely important questions. What type of institutionalized programs for African-American students are being implemented at the colleges? Why is there a proposed position for a deputy vice chancellor when there seems to be more of a need for a chief financial officer to stabilize issues with vendors and contract payments? This fiscal management seems to have perpetuated over a long period of time, as evidenced by past complaints of vendors via public forum and trustee board meetings. Why haven't there been recent or timely meetings of the citizens oversight review board? And where is the annual public report mandated by the guidelines of Bond Measure A? All of these items are part of the chancellor's duties and have yet to be addressed. The trustee board has a responsibility to Peralta's students, district instructors, and staff in this community to ensure that its chancellor carries out the duties of his contract, works in the best interest of the students and the colleges at large, obeys laws and regulations, and respects the Board enough to keep you informed and out of any trouble that may result from his direct actions. At this point, and given all the concerns above, we begin to question the overall operational and equally important financial operations of the Peralta District. Thus, we request that you as chairperson and other members of the Board of Trustees as elected representatives of the community to do these things. One, initiate an independent comprehensive assessment of the district's financial operations. Two, conduct a forensic financial audit of Measures A and E to examine all of the transactions that have occurred. Three, and most importantly, take calls to thoroughly and objectively review Dr. Ortiz's performance over the past year. We further recommend that this review must take stock of the past several months of absolutely unnecessary diabolical treatment of President Elnora Webb, the disruption of her life, and the subsequent effect it must have had on her staff. Finally, we request that you not renew Chancellor Ortiz's contract. It is time to find a leader who truly respects all that Peralta stands for, wants to build a positive future for the Peralta colleges, and truly values a partnership with the greater Oakland community. Sign Reverend Cheryl Denise Ward, East Bay Coalition for Change, the African-American Chamber of Commerce, the National Association for Colored People Oakland Chapter, the pastors of Oakland, the Faith Action Council, 100 Black Men, 100 Black Women, the National Action Network Oakland Chapter. Thank you.
Bert Dragon.
Dragon.
Dragon, sorry.
Awfully tough to follow that. I'm here to respond to a conversation you trustees had recently about my travel to Washington, DC, and questioned was the lateness of the request and the amount spent. President Webb kindly took responsibility on both counts. But I'd like to enlighten the trustees and the Chancellor on a few things. First, I made the request in February for the May conference. It was approved by my dean, Felix Robles, who was interim following the November resignation of Dean Marco Menendez. Dean Robles has since left, along with his secretary, one of the most competent I have ever seen, Joanna Louie. So paperwork was not moving quickly to Dr. Webb's office. And just so you know what the journalism faculty Washington workshop was about, here's a brief summation. There were seven of us journalism professors from around the country and one from Ecuador. Our guide was Gil Klein, a journalism professor at American University. They sponsored this event. This was his third year doing the workshop, and he had been a journalist and president of the press club for one year, which is the length. The press club was started in 1908, originally a place for reporters to drink and play cards. But eventually, the bar stopped taking credit, and so it has blossomed into this incredible institution two blocks from the White House. So, our goal on this trip was to glean as much as we could about this fast-moving industry called journalism, and learn about internships. We met Monday evening at the National Press Club for dinner to get acquainted. This event, and you'll hear I'm convincing, for three days into a couple of minutes, we couldn't have done it without that wonderful Metro in Washington, DC. So we met Tuesday morning, 9:30 at the press club with three young journalists in their twenties. One worked for the Huffington Post, one Sirius FM Radio, and National Geographic. 11:30, we were at Kiplinger's Magazine, and each of these stops were an hour or more, talking to people in charge and who could tell us about the journalism field. At 2 o'clock, we met at the Pulitzer Center on crisis reporting. We saw some very poignant video about some crises worse even than some that have happened at Peralta, crises around the world. And the Pulitzer Center is doing amazing things. 6:30, we had dinner at the press club with our guest, Marvin Kalb. That name may mean something to some of you. He was the last one to be hired by Edward R. Murrow at CBS News, and there were some great anecdotes that Marvin Kalb had to tell us about his meetings with Khrushchev and much more. So we were meeting journalists from in their twenties to Marvin Kalb, who was 83 years old. Wednesday morning at 9:30, we were at the Washington Post, and all of these, again, we had a tour, and we talked to people specifically about the industry and about internships.
Excuse me, Mr. Dragon, could you... We've run out of time, so if you could sort of...
Okay. I noticed the last speaker. Well, okay. Okay. 1 PM Slate Magazine, 2:45 Politico. Thursday, we went to American University and heard from several of their professors, one of whom was the co-founder of Wikipedia. And I have a trivia question for you. Why did they call it Wikipedia? Anyone know? I didn't know. It never occurred to me. The co-founder was in Hawaii, and wiki wiki in Hawaiian means quick or soon. So that's how the name... So if anybody should ask you, you heard it here. 2 PM, we were at NBC Washington Bureau, where they do Meet the Press. We were on a tour, again, talked to people. 3:30 at CBS affiliate. And then again, we came back to the National Press Club for a farewell dinner. We received a whole lot of knowledge, and even since the conference, I've since gotten information about a class that's being taught at American University, and I printed something out. I'll try to get copies for you to share with the trustees, okay? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. If you could give those copies to the clerk, she'll make sure to get them out to the Board. Thank you. Professor Dragon.
Good evening. I'm Matthew Goldstein, president of the Peralta Federation of Teachers, AFT Local 1603. PFT will continue to meet with the district over the summer as it works on cleaning up language in our collective bargaining agreement, and developing contracts for categorical employees, and analyzing proposed changes to dental and medical coverage. The union is also eager to settle a potential grievance over Medicare Part D reimbursements, and to help the district improve the ways that it communicates with faculty about tenure-track job openings. Next fall, the PFT and the district will open comprehensive contract talks, negotiations that will cover a broad range of issues, and that will ultimately lead, we hope, to a new three-year deal. PFT looks forward to productive sessions held against the backdrop of a much-improved state and district fiscal picture. Last Friday, PFT sent a couple of carloads of folks up to Sacramento to a rally in support of City College of San Francisco. The occasion for the rally was the semi-annual meeting of the Accrediting Commission for Community and Junior Colleges. As has been widely reported, officials at ACCJC have publicly refused to reconsider their decision to discredit City College, despite calls from the community, the chancellor of the state community college system, and even from federal and state legislators. Nor has reassurance from the U.S. Department of Education convinced commission leadership that it would be within its rights to grant City College more time to correct any outstanding deficiencies. Some 80,000 students, that's 1 in 10 San Franciscans, 1 in 10, attend City College. Shutting it down, which would be the inevitable consequence of disaccreditation, would be catastrophic for San Francisco and the wider region. PFT stands with the students and faculty of City College, the quality of whose educational offerings has never been an issue here. PFT also hopes that ACCJC will reverse course and give the state's largest public institution of higher learning the time it needs to get its... of higher learning the time it needs to get its administrative house in order. Commission leaders' apparent indifference to the public welfare has undermined the commission's credibility and threatens to undermine the credibility of regional accrediting bodies everywhere. And I would argue that the credibility of regional accrediting bodies is not something that folks who are interested in the future of public education would want to see undermined. I guess there's some late news on that. The commission is going to be posting some proposed changes to policy tomorrow, so hopeful folks are looking for changes to the policy on whether the commission itself can reconsider its disaccreditation ruling within a particular timeframe. So check the ACCJC website tomorrow and make comments. Thanks a lot for your time.
Usually I don't need one of these. I get my shop voice going, and everybody can hear me for blocks around. Over the last several months, we've had many discussions through our emails and our colleges around accountability. And I would like to talk to the board and members of the Peralta community tonight about some people I work with that are very accountable. Too often, when we get into these discussions, we look at the negative aspects and ignore people that are doing an outstanding or very good job for us. I work in machine technology. I chair that department. We've grown a lot. We've received some, I don't know if claim is the right word, or notoriety lately for some of the things we've done, but none of that would be possible with the outstanding classified support we've received. Among those that I feel should be recognized, and I think as leaders of the board and of this Peralta community, it would be the accountability thing for leadership to do, to stop by as you go through the colleges and through the district offices and thank these people for the job they do. First of all is Fang Wong, who is Dean Peter Crabtree's administrative assistant. She probably processes more purchase orders than the rest of the district combined. She does the purchase orders for about 10 different CTE programs and probably 25 or 30 different grants. I know in the last week of March and the first week of April, for my department alone, she processed over $300,000 in purchase orders that we had to do because of the deadlines around the TAC grant. The other person that I would like to recognize tonight is Donna Jones, who unfortunately I saw today was just let go from the district for some reason. Donna works, and hopefully she'll be back soon, in purchasing. Again, we have a lot of extremely complex purchases, large equipment, multiple bids, sometimes multiple contractors on those bids, and Donna handled all of those without a hitch. We had all those go through in a matter of about 10 days, and I was fairly amazed. The other person in the district office is Tina Dew and Accounts Receivable. A lot of our purchase orders are open purchase orders, which means we have running POs with different companies, and so we have to, most of those do not come through the warehouse, which means that they have to work especially hard to make sure our vendors are taken care of and vendors are paid. And from our part, despite all the POs and all the recs and all the purchases, we didn't have a single vendor that we were late on or we had a problem with this year, and that's a large part with Tina Dew, because of Tina Dew. The last group I would like to recognize is the warehouse group, led by Shawnee Martinez. They include Jay Kendricks, Thomas Holmes, and Louis Aranha. And again, all of these people are professionals. We have large purchases that we have to bring in. They can't just come from the warehouse and then into our department. We have to have things ready for them, and then sometimes we have equipment going out that they'll hold for us until we get that equipment properly placed. Again, all of these people are professionals. They deserve your recognition, and they are extremely accountable. I want to say the main thing they are, though, is problem solvers, and the way they solve problems is they communicate. If they have an issue...
Excuse me, Mr. Quinlan. We've reached the end of the time.
Okay, can I, about five seconds? They pick up the phone, and they call somebody and say, "Is this what you want? Is this what you need? Let's figure it out. Let's get it done," and they make it work. And I just think that that needs to be recognized. Thank you.
Thank you so much, everyone, for your comments this evening. It is appreciated very much. At this point in time, we're going to move on to the next item, which is associated student government reports. We know school is out, but I'm wondering if we have any of our student leaders here tonight? Looks like we do. Why don't our student leaders come up and introduce yourselves, and please give us your updates?
Hi, my name is Sharnip Singh. I'm the vice president of programs for the College of Alameda. I'd like to, first of all, want to thank trustee Clegg and trustee Wiley for all their service to the students while they serve on the board, and also like to welcome our new student trustees. We had a very packed last month. We had a lot of ceremonies. We, of course, had the big ceremony, the graduation ceremony, which went very well. A lot of students, the students were very happy, the families were very happy, of course. We had the brotherhood ceremony. We had the Atlas graduation, and currently, the student government is working on its retreats and also planning out its next semester, planning out its events and other, also going through training to try to make sure that they're prepared for next year. Thank you very much.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Drew Johnny Koosh, and I am the incoming vice president of programs for the Associated Students of Berkeley City College. Tonight, I am filling in on behalf of our usual representative, Danny McCarty, who is unable to join us tonight. I would like to thank the governing board, Chancellor Ortiz, and the members of the public in attendance for being here today and for allowing me to speak. As our ASBCC is transitioning into the new term with newly-elected officials, we are beginning to plan projects and events for the next school year. So let me just update you a little bit on what we've been planning. Our first project is preparing for Club Rush, which is a week-long event at our college that allows clubs and organizations on campus to exhibit their clubs and encourage students to sign up as members and participate. Since this event is hosted at the start of the semester, our goal is to make Club Rush as energetic and as vibrant as possible in order to promote positivity on campus and create a sense of community on campus. Furthermore, we've been working with the Berkeley City College service community for a leadership and service retreat that they are hosting, and our AS president-elect, Danny McCarty, has been working closely with the coordinator of the program, Idina Ishi, so that ASBCC members can partake in the event. Idina is an alumni of BCC and UC Berkeley, and we are proud to have her back on the team assisting with the transition and leadership within BCC service community. And furthermore, I think the last and most important project that we've been focusing our efforts on is getting organized and beginning our planning for the projects that are coming up in the 2014 and 2015 term. With the assistance of our new director, Musafa Gaus, the AS is planning to host a retreat in which we will discuss new projects and ways in which we can prepare for the upcoming term so that we can be as efficient as possible and utilize our time to host more events for our community. We are hoping to make prior planning and organization a consistent practice for future student leaders at BCC. Overall, the newly-elected members are very excited to start the term, and I would like to thank you all again for your time.
Thank you for the reports, and thank you both for being here during this break. Really appreciate your dedication. I just want to take a point of personal privilege. My colleague pointed out that we have a visitor here from State Center Community College. Trustee Eric Payne is here. Eric, you want to stand up? He's here to steal all our secrets at Peralta, but he's being told that he's the youngest trustee in the state of California, so congratulations on that honor. Next item, we have chancellor's reports. Chancellor.
Thank you, President Guo Yang. Good evening, everyone. I am happy to report that since our last board meeting, many of us, as many of us had the opportunity to celebrate why we are here, and that is celebrate the accomplishment of our students. I attended five graduation ceremonies. You may wonder what's the fifth one, but that's a trivia question that you'll never know the answer to. But the graduations were all fabulous in my regard, because you really see what students achieve and what they accomplish based on not only what we do here at the Peralta colleges, but you also recognize the struggles and the challenges that they experience in order to fulfill their dreams. So it really reminds me and certainly reminds all of us why we are here, and it's always great to celebrate the accomplishments of our students. I also was privy to accompany President Briz Galavies and Vice President Alma Bug with the signing of MOU with the city of Oakland and their police academy and the administrative justice program at Merritt College, whereby we will be sending our students to Oakland, the proverbial "grow your own," and hopefully help bolster the Oakland Police Department with students right from our backyard. I also had an opportunity to participate with the CSU East Bay president, Dr. Leroy Marista, at a forum with the Oakland Chamber of Commerce last week, where we presented our vision as to not only where the community colleges are pointed to, but our collaborative efforts with the CSU, much of which you're here also tonight when we present the CPT program. I also want to recognize our colleague from Oakland Unified, Gary Yee, who's here with us tonight. And Gary, I know you'll be presenting tonight. I just want to remind you, it's a 10-minute spiel, so please keep it at that. Thank you very much.
Anything else, chancellor? Any other reports? Any other reports?
No, that's the end of the reports.
Okay, that brings us to the District Academic Center report. President Karen Lomad-Patten.
Thank you, Mr. President, and good evening, trustees, chancellor, district administration center staff, college presidents, colleagues, and members of the public. Student success and what it takes to support that outcome is in the news a lot these days. Last week, I distributed a link to a New York Times article describing how the University of Texas at Austin changed its student services and instruction approach to address a major reason why many low-income students do not complete a program of study. Several of you, trustees, administrators, and faculty colleagues, read that article and responded to me directly, for which I thank you again publicly. The major change at UTA is best summarized in this quotation. "If you want to help low-income students succeed, it's not enough to deal with their academic and financial obstacles. You also need to address their doubts and misconceptions and fears. To solve the problem of college completion, you first need to get inside the mind of a college student," end quote. For a psychology educator, that recognition is hugely meaningful. Professor Carol Dweck and her Stanford University colleagues have shared their decades of research results, which show that a belief about intelligence influences how ordinary bouts of self-doubt can lead to learned helplessness. That state of mind ultimately impacts a student's willingness to work as hard as necessary in an academic program despite setbacks and obstacles to succeed. In related research, University of Pennsylvania professor Angela Lee Duckworth provided compelling evidence that, quote, "grit," unquote, is a more powerful factor than what we refer to as talent. In the executive summary for the June 5 issue of Education Week, the editors introduced the theme for that issue with the headline "Spurring Student Success: It's More Than Academics." All of these researchers and resources have one message in common. They're talking about the critical and essential importance of motivation. Since beginning to teach psychology at Laney, I've often mulled over questions like, "What does it take to motivate students to learn, not just earn grades? How do I help my students become motivated? Is that an internal quality that you either have or you don't have?" Now, thanks to the researchers previously mentioned, more educators, including me, have come to believe that strategies for motivating students are within reach. In other words, we now have evidence-based answers about what it takes to enhance, increase, and improve our students' motivation to succeed. One of the most intensive and innovative interventions of the University of Texas at Austin program mentioned earlier is their University Leadership Network, a scholarship program that aims to develop leadership skills. Peralta students have been advocating for leadership training that will facilitate their effective participation with college and district shared governance processes. Faculty can structure and deliver a program to accomplish that, but it may require more of us than we currently have, and it will likely require that more of us are available during the summer break. This has contractual implications that call for careful planning and structural accountability. Perhaps by next year, we will have figured out how to help students get what they need in this regard. It is most unfortunate that we ended this academic year with an initiative to promote student success that uses local parcel tax funds, measure B, to promote innovative projects that can help fill some of the gaps between what we have and what we need. Called PASS, Peralta Accountability for Student Success, this competitive proposal process focuses on changing a few things that otherwise create obstacles for student accomplishment. While we understand the reasons for the timing of this initiative, what makes it unfortunate is that almost no full-time faculty are around to influence that process or those decisions. What we need, in my opinion, is to develop an integrated and coordinated set of programs and services that incorporate some of the strategies that have already been demonstrated to be effective. Integration and coordination do not happen by administrative fiat. They happen by getting all of the major players to think and plan together over a reasonable period of time with a shared goal in mind. That can't happen right now before June 30th, because the primary players aren't around to engage. Faculty have a phrase for the kinds of decisions that get made in our absence between the spring and fall semesters. We call them, quote, "summer surprises," unquote. We're hopeful that these surprises, particularly with respect to the past funding proposals, will be minimal and minimally impactful. That concludes my comments for tonight. Thank you for receiving them.
Thank you, Dr. Van Patten, for your report. We move on to the next item, which is presentation on our tentative budget. Vice Chancellor Rennie. And just want to tell my colleagues, I don't think the PowerPoint projections are working, so we only have the TV monitors tonight, and you also have the materials in front of you.
No, it'll be on the big screen, and it won't be on the monitor.
Okay. Thank you for the correction. Vice Chancellor Rennie.
Is it already up there? I just go for it? Thank you, President Guo. It's my privilege to present the proposed tentative budget to you tonight. It's the 2014-15 tentative budget for Peralta Community College District. As in the past, I wanted to go over the agenda. The agenda for tonight is the board policies, how we got to where we are today, actually, how these numbers came to be, and then go over the 2014 tentative budget. And I just wanted to, due to time, I'm just going to go over the two major operating budgets, the general fund and the parcel tax fund in summary. However, I will mention some things about some of the other funds that are also having some changes. So the budget development process for Peralta Community College District, as you've been told in the past, and I just kind of want to go over it again, is that we actually start this process very early on in the fiscal year. We started in January, when the board actually adopted the budget development calendar. And at that point... And at that point, the calendar puts all of the dates out there and all of the deadlines for the different types of development to go through the shared governance process. So all of these numbers have started way back in January, and a team of individuals have actually put all of this together. Each of the colleges have their process in which they go through, and then it's brought into the PBC. And we go over all of those numbers again, and then we put them together and we present them here. It all starts with the budget assumptions, which are also shared with you earlier on in the fiscal year. And then those budget assumptions, as the year progresses and as things change, those are also relayed and shared at all of the PBC and the councils also. Oh, I went and pushed the wrong button, sorry. So this is just a quick snapshot of the budget development calendar. And as I stated, back in January, we actually started with the budget development calendar, and through the months, we've done different processes and different steps. What I want to kind of point out here is the last three steps. Today is June 10th, and we are presenting the first time, for the first time, the tentative budget to you for your review. We will bring this budget back with any changes that either come up from tonight or as we're reviewing the budget within the next week or so, that any major changes that come up, we will change those and bring them to you on the 24th. And then, as we all know, the state has the responsibility of having a budget by July 1. And once that budget is signed into, in, then we will bring that information back. And at September 9th, we will implement or put all of those changes that apply to us into the budget and bring that back to you for a final approval of the budget on the 9th of September at that board meeting. So the assumptions, I'm just going to go over a few of them. The first is that we will have a balanced budget, which means that we will not plan to deficit spend. We will only spend the revenue that comes into the district. We will have a contingency reserve of no less than 5%. We will utilize the PBIM model, which is the model of the Planning Budget Integration Model. And they're based on this, the model, the process, the PBIM process. This year, there was a request and it vented through all of the shared governance to put a line item in the budget for facilities, maintenance, and repair. So we added that to our general assumptions. I believe it was last month at the PBC Council it was agreed upon. And that, and we'll go into this a little bit in more in detail with the deferred maintenance, but the line item budget in the, we've been building and we've, we have all of these buildings and all of this, all of these facilities, that we haven't really been able to dedicate money to maintain those facilities. And so all of the, I don't know why I'm stuttering in my mouth, all of the presidents and all of the council members decided, came to the conclusion and asked that we actually put something into the budget for the facilities to make sure that we can maintain and keep these facilities nice so that our students would like to come to our facilities. For the revenue part of it, we have the, we built in a general apportionment deficit factor of 2%. We built in access restoration, or what was formerly known as growth money, of 2.5%. And these are based on the may revise, the governors may revise, 0.86 cost of living adjustment, a COLA, funded base credit, full-time equivalent students of $19,093, and non-credit of 90.55. That includes the 2.5% growth. The governor's budget originally had recommended that we put in, that he was going to fund a 3% cost of living adjustment, and it had, excuse me, growth monies. And it actually has come down to 2.5 for him. We at the colleges and at cabinet have been discussing whether that is a realistic goal, and we are going to continue to analyze that. We have anticipated property tax receipts of $28.6 million. Our restricted lottery dollars remain the same as in previous years of $126 for each of our full-time equivalent students. In 2009-10, we had the option of participating in the mandated cost block grant, and so we are guaranteed to get $503,000 a year for, I believe it was five years, for the mandated block grant. And so that will continue on. And then for our parcel tax, we are budgeting at total parcels of $167,779. And that is the same number of parcels that we budgeted or that were collected for this fiscal year, fiscal year 1314. On the other side, how are we, what does the expenses look like? We're actually, when we built the budget for the expenditures, all of the step and column, salary increases for all of the employees that were eligible for them have been built in. The next three bullets have increased, there are increased expenses for the district, which are out of our control. Public employees' retirement system, PERS, went up from 11.4% to 11.7%. And the state teachers' retirement system, it's projected to go up to 9.5 from 8.25. This is the first time in many years that this has increased, and there's a lot of talk up at the state level as to whether this will really happen, but we're planning for the worst-case scenario, and so we need to budget for that. Our workers' compensation rate went from 1.2% to 1.3%. The district contribution for DSPS has been, I don't know if you'll recall, but back three years ago, when in 910, when all of the districts were, all of the categoricals were actually reduced, we opted to maintain the contribution of $1.15 million for DSPS, and so that has continued on this year. The next one, the medical premiums are budgeted according to the 1415 renewal rates. This is something that has a huge impact on us. Thank you. Our rates, our self-insurance rates went up anywhere from 17% to 22%. Our Kaiser rate remained flat. And so the medical premiums increased, just the premiums alone for our district was about We had, based on our actuarial study for our OPEB, we had no increase in the contributions that we are charging to the district. We increased utilities by 2% based on prior year expenses. And then the final is the 1% adjustment for the PFT salary schedules, that was to equalize the ongoing costs so that their settlement for 1213, their ongoing costs will amount to the same as the other district, the other units. This is a graph that, this is a graph that you've actually seen in the past, and I just wanted to bring it back to you to show you that in the past, we've always said that we, when we budget, we budget for whatever the growth is, plus we plan and we build our class schedules for 300 FTEs's above that. And I wanted to show you that if you look back at 1213 and 1314, the last graph that you saw last year had a gap between those two of those 300 students. There was actually excess dollars, unclaimed growth dollars from other districts in those years, and so the state went back and funded us on those, and so that gap is closing. And so it showed, I just wanted to make sure that, or to point out that it is a good thing to do that because we don't want to leave table, money on the table at the state level. We want to be able to utilize those dollars, and we've been able to do that because of the fact that we plan to educate more students than we're actually funded for. So if we put all of this information together, you'll see that on the next, the next slide, and the detail for these is actually in your budget, in the budget packets. Our total revenues for this fiscal year is about $126 million, a little bit over $126 million for our general fund unrestricted. You'll see that that's about $7 million more than what we brought in last year at the budget development time. And that's because when we did the budget development in, for fiscal year 1314, obviously we had the budget development, we weren't absolutely positive of what the COLA was going to be and the access monies, and so they weren't all loaded at that time. The working budget as of 4/30/2014 is a truer reflection of the actual funding levels that came from the state, so. And then the other columns here are the working budget, the actuals as of 4/30/2014, and you'll notice that we are still, for this year, about $40,000 shy of what we are entitled to receive for the anticipated revenues. Then we flip on, how are we spending the money? We're spending the money, as you can see, we're anticipating about $22.5 million on full-time academic, which is about $1.7 million greater than last year. And then you can go down, and if you'll notice under the fringe benefits, the $1.6 million is a reflection of the increase in the health and welfare and the STIRS and the PERS, state teachers' retirement, public employees' retirement, and the workers' comp and other increases for our mandatories. Our debt service payment also is another large increase from the prior year, and it's $1.6 million. And so our increases also equals $7 million, if you can see at the bottom there. So that's the general fund, unrestricted funds. The other operating fund that we rely on for our daily operations is our parcel tax fund. And you can see that next year, we're planning to bring in about $8,555,000, very close to what we've brought in this year, $8,560,000. The reason it's a little bit greater is because of the interest calculation for, because we do receive interest on the unspent funds. And then we're using about $6.5 million, or actually $6.5 million for part-time faculty. And then the classified salaries are the positions in which we, they were positions that were there last year in 1314 also. It was the, there was two classified staffs at the district office, a researcher and a, the Moodle coordinator, and then there's classified staffs at each of the campuses. I wanted to just mention briefly a couple of the other funds. If you look in your, in your packet, the restricted general fund, which is our categorical and grant funds, we have updated some of the grants, but not all of the grants, because we're not sure of what the actual awards are at this point. So once we start getting those awards, we'll fill them in. Some of them, one of them will be presented tonight. Other ones include the SSSP grants from the state. We're not sure of our allocations for that yet. The carryovers for many of our multi-year grants are not in there as of yet, but as we get them, we will load them and bring them back to you. The next fund is the capital outlay fund, and that's where we're putting our state deferred maintenance allocation. And that allocation went, this year in fiscal year 1314, we had $225,000, which we required a match for, a one-for-one match. Next year, we're slated to get, depending on how they split the deferred maintenance, anywhere from $1.3 to $2.6 million. We've loaded the 1.3 at this point, and once the information comes from the state, we'll update that also. But that is where that, those funds are actually allocated. And then, a little bit different than prior years, the Measure A and the Measure E bond funds. This year, we did a reconciliation of all of the projects in both of those bond funds, and we loaded the entire amount that it was going to take for each of those projects in the budget this year. And so what we're going to do from this point forward is continue those projects and load the remaining balances rather than reloading every year to accommodate that. And so we've already loaded 85% of what the balances were as of April 30th, 2014, and then the remaining will be updated once we actually close the books, because we have to leave that, that area for the final two months of expenditures. And then the child development fund, you'll notice that that also does not, the revenue and expenses do not match exactly in that, and that's because we are, they're using some of their reserve funds this year to refurbish and renovate the, one of their locations. And so what we're going to, what they're doing is rebuilding that reserve backup. And then the OPEB fund is also $1.5 million, and that one's, I need to make some adjustments to that for the next tentative, as when we were building that budget, we overlooked one of the areas and we had doubled up on one of the, one of the object codes, so we need to pull that back out for you. From here, our next steps are, obviously, we will continue to review, 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 and we'll make modifications to the, this proposed budget, proposed tentative budget and bring it back to you. And we will present it next on the 24th. And then what we will plan to do is align the district budget with any state, state final budgets that come across as far as if there's any major changes, if maybe they shift some money from growth to COLA or something of that nature, we'll make sure that that's reflected in there. And then when you come back on the 9th of December, we will present the final budget to you.
Thank you for the presentation, Vice Chancellor Rennie. I want to thank you for the comprehensive budget that was delivered to the board. I thought it was very clear, it was very well-written, at least the executives, the summary part of it. And overall, I was just commenting to my colleague that I thought it was a good presentation about your shop and putting this budget together. That said, I know the board has some questions. At this point, I'd like to just entertain questions from the Board of Trustees, starting with Trustee Brown.
Thank you again for that report. I echo my colleagues' comments. It's, I was really pleased to see that there had been the manifestation of the second standard in the principles of sound fiscal management, where we, there has been a line item for the budget for facilities, maintenance, and repair. And I'm wondering if that also includes the operational cost. I thought I'd seen a line item for operational cost for our buildings as well, and I wanted to just make sure that I was correct, that that was included in our budget, so that we'll know that we can continue to have our learning environment, support our students, and have that made as part of our budget.
When you say line item for operational, is our, can you?
Well, what I'm, speaking of is the cost that we have for the maintenance and repair, and also for the upgrades that sometimes are necessary to keep the buildings functioning. And I'm wondering to what extent that has been, has been allocated for, and included in our budget.
At this point, we're still developing that, the line items for both the facility maintenance and the operations of that. And so as of this moment, there's not, that is not in there, but it is the intent to put that in there.
Trustee Witherow.
Just a brief question. On the STIRS, you showed, I think it was 11%?
9.5 for STIRS.
9.5, okay. So that's moved from eight and a quarter of last year. We received a report from the league that over the course of the next eight to 10 years, that it's going to go to plus 20% for STIRS. Just in a, in a rough set, if that happened this year, what would that do to our budget?
The 1.25% was right around $400,000. So you would have to put that out there for at least 10 times, yeah, maybe.
About $10 million?
Mm-hmm. About four times 10, about 4 million, right?
Okay. So how would you incorporate that into the budget? In other words, how would you find the flexibility to accommodate that amount of money?
It would take major restructuring, a major restructuring of, reconstruction of the entire budget. The, right now, there isn't, there isn't a way that we could do that without, how would we do that? We would have a lot of upset presidents. I mean, the only way that I could see that we could actually do that as of right now is we would have to possibly reduce sections at this point, which we just restored, so.
Okay.
And that's just off the top of my head. I mean, I'm sure that we could...
Is there a way we could get just a brief statement that some of us could take to the state and chat with them about the impact of what they've proposed?
Sure. I can, yes, I can do that.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Trustee Witherow. Trustee Gonzalez-Yan.
Thank you. I want to echo what my colleagues have said, and I know that your, your office has been short-staffed since, well, the whole year, and so this is great, and I'm sure you've been working overtime to make this happen. And just, you know, I know that my colleagues on the board are enormously appreciative of the work of you and your staff, so thank you.
Thank you. I'll let them know.
I want to, you know, just real quickly, just follow up on Trustee Witherow with comment. You know, these models that people have been talking about in terms of STIRS and PERS contributions, and they, they talk about them in terms of the district contribution and then the faculty-staff contribution, and the fallacy of making that distinction is that it's actually almost all faculty and staff contribution, because the overwhelming share of the budget is in salaries. And so if you're going to, in fact, increase the quote-unquote "district percentage" by 10% or 5% or whatever it is, it just means there's money that gets taken. it just means there's money that gets taken off the table in terms of COLA and other things. It's, it's an absolute fallacy, it's an absolute, it's a disgraceful deception, taking money away from working people, as though, as though there's some magic, magic that the district can do. So, thank you, Trustee Witherow, for, for pointing out the impossibility of that. I did have a question, though, about the working budget versus the actual budget. At the end of the day, we ended up pulling in more revenue, it looked like, than we had budgeted. Did we then end up spending all that money? Or did we have some reserve that, did we have money that went into reserves above and beyond what we had originally allocated and then spent?
The, the original budget, when the original budget was approved, it did not include any of the cost-of-living adjustments that were approved by the board and negotiated. And so, some of it was spent on the, the cost-of-living adjustments and the one time out of, off the salary schedule that went through. But there will, it is estimated right now that there will be excess revenue over expenditures in this fiscal year in 2013-14.
Okay, so we're going to increase our reserves by a little bit, and that, that's always nice. It looks like there's a little bit of growth money on the table, and what I heard you say was that Chancellor Staff is trying to figure out whether, in fact, we have the wherewithal to, to earn that growth, whether we actually can pull in that. But if, in fact, we did that, does this budget then project that above and beyond the additional costs for medical benefits, PERS, STIRS contributions, et cetera, would there, in fact, then be additional money in the budget? If we earned that, all that growth, would there, in fact, be money above and beyond the, the hard-dollar costs that we know are going up, the, the medical and the PERS and STIRS? Are we anticipating that there would actually be additional growth money that isn't yet accounted for in our hard costs?
The actual, the revenue for the 2.5% growth is included in this budget.
Okay, and it's all spent, then?
Yes.
Okay. So, that led to my last question, and that had to do with the budget allocation model, which we've been trying to work on. We've been trying to equalize spending. And I know President Abreesh Galavies is just like, she's anticipating my question here. You know, when I look at the, the allocation, it still looks like, not my favorite college, but one that's, that's near and dear to my heart, Berkeley City College, is actually still down in terms of personnel, in terms of dollars, et cetera. And so, I'm wondering whether we're, in fact, going to make any progress in realizing the actual model that we've got on, on table? Or are we just saying, you know what, there's no money this year, and so, we're just going to live with the historical inequities?
The, the discussion, and we have had this exact same discussion in PBC. And the discussion at, at this point is that we recognize that the model that we're working with has some areas that we really need to relook at, how, how the, the allocations are not necessarily allocated, but how they're counted against the allocation. And that is on the table, and it is something that we, it is on our agenda to do at the PBC. Answering your question is, this year, the allocations are out there, and the, it, I mean, it's not, I don't see that we've made any changes this year that will help get us to where we need to be with that.
Okay, so we're not going to make progress in that area this year, in any case. You know, the international and out-of-state revenue, student revenue, that's above and beyond, is that counted against the allocation model, or is that bonus money? It's like you allocate all the general fund, you allocate the, the revenues from the state, and then you've got this international students, et cetera. Is that bonus money, or is that, like, counted in towards the budget allocation model?
For the budget allocation model, it's actually, it's, it's separate. And then, we take off the, from the actual revenue that's generated, we take off of the operating costs of the department. And then, we distribute those, those revenues, the remainder revenues, based on the number of students, the percent of the non-resident, out-of-state students that are within each of the colleges.
Okay, so the inequities that we see are actually even greater than they would be if you took away that international student money, and you, you really reported it and said, here's the, here's the dollar percent, here's the percentage expenditures. The percentage would actually be even magnified even more if you took away the, the international student money that BCC earns.
Yes.
Okay, well, I appreciate, you know, I appreciate your presentation, and I hope that we'll just make some progress in these areas.
Me too.
Thank you.
Seeing no other questions, we thank you again for your presentation. Thank you so much. And we look forward to an updated budget on the 24th, and thank your staff for all the hard work they've done on this project. Moving on, the next item is a presentation of Career Pathways Trust Grants. Presenter is Vice Chancellor Orkern, Gary Yee, Oakland Unified School District, and I believe Karen Engel, too. Says 10 minutes.
Good evening, members of the Board of Trustees, Peralta colleagues, and Peralta community, and the community at large. So, tonight, I'm going to speak for a few minutes about the $15 million Career Pathways Trust Grant that we received recently. My colleague and friend, Gary Yee, who's Superintendent of Oakland Unified School District, will say a few words, too. And I believe the board members have some background materials in the form of some slides. So, most of the things that we, the, most of the information on those slides will be covered in our comments. So, we're excited, to say the least, by the opportunity provided by the $15 million Career Pathways Trust Grant, for which Peralta's the fiscal lead and the operational lead, to help create a system that connects educational institutions, employers, and support groups across the East Bay 8880 corridor. This consortium has many moving parts, including 11 K-12 districts, six community colleges, two county offices of education, regional occupation programs, workforce investment boards, industry partners, chambers of commerce, and community-based organizations. And over the last couple of months, in the process of applying for this grant, we were able to get all of these, the folks leading these different agencies into a room, and have meetings, and establish a, an amazing consortium. It was like herding cats. Gary and I are two of the cats. The chief cat herder was Karen Engel, who, none of this would have been possible without Karen Engel, our Director of Development. So, I'd like to acknowledge Karen now. This never would have gotten off the ground. It was an amazing logistical achievement to see all of these folks in a room together, week after week. So, we believe that this is an amazing opportunity to connect these groups into a cohesive regional infrastructure for the benefit of our students as they transition from high school to college to career. The low completion rate in California community colleges cries out for innovative collaborations between K-12s, community colleges, and employers. The Career Pathways Trust will allow us to further develop these collaborations and cement partnerships for the future. New agreements for data sharing will enable colleges to better know their students and to further provide individualized support. By working with our K-12 partners, we will establish strong academic pathways, provide needed counseling and orientation during the transition from high school to college, and build a comprehensive network to help students move from one stage of their journey to the next. CPT, Career Pathways Trust, will enable more students to take college courses while they are still in high school. This opportunity, along with the introduction of multiple measures and other robust assessment techniques, will make it easier for students to avoid getting sucked into the frightening vortex of remedial courses when they reach college. We will develop a clear roadmap to help students find the courses they need and pursue the career pathways they want at the colleges of their choice. We hope that, in your, in your background materials, there's a list of outcomes. As a result of this three-year, $15 million grant, we hope to achieve increased enrollment, higher rates of success and persistence of both high school and community college students, higher rates of completion, transfer, and career placement, and regional infrastructure connecting K-12 community colleges and employers that continues beyond the lifetime of the grant. By developing clearly defined career pathways for students to follow on their journey from K-12 to college to career, we will help turn what sometimes seems like an impossible dream into an attainable reality for all those who wish to take the journey. So, I'm going to turn the mic over to Gary.
Thank you very much, Presidents and Trustees, and Chancellor and staff. So, this is actually a really exciting moment, and I, I thought I would just take, since President Guyen said I don't, I have personally 10 minutes, right? Is that what you meant? And the clock hasn't even started moving yet, so. But anyways, I wanted to give you a little of the backstory behind this. Senator Pro Tem Darrell Steinberg announced this Career Pathway Initiative, and was able to put $250 million statewide in this highly competitive grant. And there were three different levels that you could apply for, $600,000, $6 million, and $15 million. So, my first initiative was to partner with Peralta colleges and go for the $6 million, just for the two of us. But, you know, from the work that we've been doing, I realized that we have an opportunity to, both of us, Oakland Unified and Peralta, to be regional leaders in the area of career tech education. And this is what it's about. This is not about transferring four-year colleges. With, do apologies to my academic faculty, former colleagues. This is about career tech education, career readiness, and, and, and improving the workforce. And if you recall, when I was here in a former life, I was really interested in dual enrollment. So, dual enrollment has really taken off nationwide. And I want to thank, in part, Linda Collins of the Career Letters Project, is our local, community-based organization, which has really been promoting both the contextualized instruction of the Career Advancement Academies, which is Lewis Quinlan's work, and also the dual enrollment connection between high schools and community colleges. So, College Valumina has dual enrollment with ASTI. Laney and Merritt College have begun to develop some of that. And the, the next logical step of it is to really build out the dual enrollment opportunities. The second big piece is to build intentional bridges between what we call linked learning in high school and what you call CTE in community colleges. So, we now have 20 linked learning academies in Oakland. We're going to double that in four years. Our goal is in four years to have 80% of our students graduating from a linked learning academy, which is very much like your CTE classes, programs that are contextualized to your academic core, but are focused on some career options for the kids. We have some evidence right now that the graduation rate of kids going through a linked learning academy is 25% higher than it is for kids who are just going through a regular program. And the difference is really significant if we're talking about our black and brown students, and our English learners, and our kids in high-poverty circumstances. So, they actually benefit the most if we can get them in these academies. But just graduating from high school is not enough for me. We need college, community, and career success. So, that requires our community college partners. That's what this grant is about. I can tell you, we were all bummed out, including Karen, when we didn't get an interview, which was a stepping stone to getting the finals. So, there was a, there was some outpouring of letters and so forth. So, we've, and I don't, we don't know what the reason is, but we did actually get an interview. So, we, we met together, put together a pretty persuasive interview up in Sacramento, including community college people. One of the big things they said was they couldn't actually believe that anybody could put this many community college districts, let alone colleges, this many school districts, the county boards of education and all that, how could anybody make it happen? Well, we actually did make it happen. I want to thank and appreciate the collective leadership in Oakland. The Chancellor really wanted this, and he put the resources together to make it happen. I really wanted it, and so, you know, I'm willing to hand this whole thing over in 13 working days to my successor, Dr. Antoine Wilson, coming from Assistant Superintendent in Denver. Guess what? He was a, used to be a high school principal and a manager of high schools and post-secondary success in Denver. Guess what he loves? He loves pathways. So, this is my welcoming gift for him, my housewarming for him to come to Oakland, to not only deliver the, to deliver the grant, but deliver colleagues like yourselves who are going to actually make this happen. So, what does it really take? I mean, the challenge is really there, because there's three big things. One, we're going to have to significantly expand our dual enrollment programs, have them articulated first with faculty, so that the faculty understand the quality of our linked learning academies. We're going to get, have to get more dual enrollment classes. Secondly, we're going to have to really look at multiple measures and, and look at the use of, of grades and test, test scores and so forth for seniors in college. This is demonstrated to be actually more, more successful predictor of success than, than Compass or Accuplace or whatever you guys use now. And the third thing is, we're going to have to actually build bridges between high school and community college, so that the intention of our kids is not that community college is its default that you, that you plan for in August, but it's the first choice that you plan for in September of your senior year, and you're all ready to go. I see your General Counsel, Winn, who's, I believe, President of Marcus Foster Education Fund now. They just completed a FAFSA enrollment of our high school seniors. 70% of our high school seniors now have FAFSA. Next year, I'm hoping that we get FAFSA and CCC online for all of our colleges, so that we have all of our students enrolled and ready to go before they graduate from high school. And we're hoping that one, 80%, the 80% in the, in our, in linked learning academy are all going to have at least one dual enrollment class. So, they have a Peralta, or if Peralta doesn't want to do it, Shaboo. Or if Shaboo doesn't want to do it, Country Costa College transcript, that they can say, when they graduate from high school, that they've already got, demonstrated college success. So, that's our, that's, nothing short of this. It's a three-year initiative. The State Senate is already interested in, they, they have a proposal to put another $300 million into this thing. So, if we can demonstrate success in, in this three years as a region, and if our employers and our workforce development sees the benefit of this, I think there's a bright future for the leadership for, not only for the community colleges and K-12s, but for the Bay Area region. And, and I want to thank you all for working on this with me. And I think that's, well, the clock's not even moving, so I still got another 10 minutes. But I think we're ready for any kind of questions. Linda Collins can come up and talk about it statewide, if you want, have any questions about that. And Karen can tell you the nuts and bolts about how much dough each college is going to get, and all the, the minor details that nobody really cares about, I'm sure.
Well, I just wanted to give Karen and Linda an opportunity, if you wanted to add something to what was already covered.
We're excited, ready to work, all up our sleeves, let's go.
Thank you. Let me ask my colleagues, is there any questions about this Career Pathways Grant? Trustees? Trustee Galaza.
Hey, Gary, good to see you. And I really admire your enthusiasm and the great work you're doing as a Superintendent of OUSD. It's, it's time we had the kind of leadership that you have inherent, and we're very, very happy to see you in participation with all of the Peralta folks and with the entire area. Great work.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? All right, we'll see none. Thank you so much, and hopefully, there's another $50 million grant out there three years from now, if not more.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I neglected the most important part of the meeting tonight, which was Board of Trustees' reports. So, we're going to go back to that item, if there's no objection from the board. I'd like to start with Trustee Witherow. Do you have a board report tonight? No? See none?
Carl Oliver, new income student trustee. Think I might want to step down. I don't, you know, I, I kind of value my student government report. Kind of bummed out I couldn't give that today, but excited to be here, excited to learn. Yeah, just excited, thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Gonzalez Yan.
Thank you. I want to give a warm welcome to our new student trustees. Thank you for your service, uh, and the blood you'll give in the next year. I'm, you know, I'm really impressed with the CTE training work, and, and I want to thank the staff for, for making that possible. I want to point out that getting the education and getting a job is only, only the first part of it, because the next part of it, then, is actually getting a wage. And the wages don't always necessarily come with the jobs. Another vital role that we play in this district is actually, then, educating students in the arts of civic participation. And I've been really honored to work, especially with the students at Berkeley City College over the last year and a half, uh, trying to raise the minimum wage in the region. I'm looking forward to our district report on raising the minimum wage in the district, which I understand is coming later this month. Earlier tonight, we heard from Rudrani Ghosh, uh, the new Vice President of Student Government at Berkeley City College, and she, and Danny McCarty in particular, have been instrumental in the student organizing around this issue. The minimum wage organizing in the region has really been driven, in many ways, by students, and I'm really happy to report that tonight, the Berkeley City Council, after a year and a half of organizing that was driven by students, meetings at Berkeley City College, basically every, every other week for the last year and a half, the Berkeley City Council passed a first reading to raise the minimum wage in the city of Berkeley to $12.53 by the year 2016. It needs a second vote, which, which hopefully we'll have in two years, but I, I really want to extend a special thanks to Rudrani and Danny and the other student leaders, um, both at Berkeley City College and UC Berkeley and, and the other colleges, who've been working hard with partners in labor and the community to make that possible, so that when we get these CTE jobs and when people then go out and bargain, the baseline that they're bargaining for is a higher baseline, because that's really what's important. We, we've seen for, for three decades, a reversal in the wages with student leadership and with the help of amazing faculty and staff in this district, we're seeing some of that, uh, reversed. So, thank you. That was all I had to say.
Trustee Brown.
I'd like to also echo the welcome to our new student trustees. We're glad to have you and looking forward to a really exciting year. And, um, the graduations were the big event in May. They were wonderful. All of the graduations were exciting, full of joy, and just a marvelous affirmation of the academic excellence and achievement of the colleges that we have here at Peralta and the wonderful leadership we have of the, from the presidents of our colleges. And so, thank you to our college presidents for leading your colleges and, and having such wonderful graduations to celebrate the achievement of these students. One of the things that, uh, the, the presidents are gonna be shy, I'm gonna have to tell you that, uh, Peralta has the, the esteemed honor of being selected as one of the locations of the president's 2014 White House Summit on Educational Excellence for African-Americans. And I think that national recognition is significant. It will be held at Laney College, and it'll be, um, this, the weekend after next, Friday, June 13th, and Saturday.
This weekend.
This weekend, okay. Well, I'm forgetting my calendar. It's this weekend, that's how fast things are moving. And so, I think that, uh, that deserves a, a round of applause, that our district and Laney College is being recognized by the President of the United States as, as a leader in academic excellence. And just, uh, speaking of academic excellence, I'd like to point out that our trustee Linda Handy completed her Excellence in Trusteeship Training. I won't talk about how I had to persuade and twist her arm to get her to go to these classes and how she just became, just enthused with learning, and she's one of the first of us to complete that training. So, round of applause for trustee Handy. And although the faculty, uh, many of them are off on their, um, their, uh, summer programs now, I had the pleasure of meeting with one of our faculty leaders, Cynthia Mahavar, just a week or two ago regarding the really intense and important work that the part-time faculty are doing, and how important they are to student success. So, I just want to recognize our faculty as being very instrumental and the, the, really the foundation of our student success. The more that our students have access to our esteemed faculty, I think, as it was pointed out in Dr. Van Putten's, um, the article that she circulated on, on student success and learning, it's really the personal touch, it's the time, and it's the support and encouragement. So, thank you to our faculty as well.
Thank you. Trustee Handy.
It has been, um, it's been the month for celebrations. As, most of us attended five graduations for, um, Peralta colleges, starting the first one was the, I believe, the sixth, or was it the seventh? Actually, my granddaughter is five years old, so maybe the sixth African-American trustee, I mean, African-American graduation. And this is, this is something that is done by faculty and staff on a shoestring budget, but it is something that's very, very special, that honors the stu, the students, and brings in all of the traditions of the African culture, the African-American culture, and other, um, cultures from the islands. So, the five graduations in seven days, and then, um, having the honor, again, to go to Las Vegas to attend a graduation of my cousin who received her doctorate in education, and then today, kindergarten. My granddaughter graduated from kindergarten, and she thinks that that was the most special of all of the graduations that I've attended. Also, um, I, having the opportunity to complete the Excellency in Trusteeship Program, which is done by the Community College League. When they first announced this about a year ago, and, um, trustee Galasa was on the board, who helped to come up with a way that trustees could, um, be more knowledgeable in the subjects that we, that we govern with, and also, um, a way of showing the accreditation team our commitment and that we have knowledge in seven different competencies. There are 29 credits that you need to, um, to get to do this. So, you're Governance and, um, Student Services, um, Fiscal, um, Brown Act, what are the other two? Can you think of the other ones? Anyway, there's quite, there's quite a few of them, and you, um, attend these sessions through our different, um, league conferences. So, um, several community college boards have adopted the Excellency in Trusteeship Program as their formal continuing education program and fulfillment of the WASC accreditation standards. I am really grateful that our college decided to adopt this. I think I'm number 15 to complete in the nation. And, um, and it's an incredible program, and I'm just honored that Meredith twisted my arm and made me do it, but in the end, I was really grateful. And as I ran into other trustees in Newport Beach, as I was finishing, they would say, "Wait a minute, I thought you said never." And I said, "But, as usual, um, when I say never, trustee Brown will let me see, help me to see, um, that I need to change that." And also, because Psy recommended it so highly, and because they worked so hard to create this for us, I was really curious, and I think it's just an excellent opportunity for us to do it, and I hope that other members, in fact, many of you will probably find that you've already completed all of the, um, the, the sections, you just have to go through all of your materials and submit them. So, if you've done Brown Act online or some of the other ones, you may be closer to completing the, um, the, um, documentation than you think. So, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, trustee Handy, and congratulations for being a good role model to trustees up and down the state, and, um, there you go. Thank you. Trustee Rowley.
Okay. Good mor, or good, uh, good evening, uh, board members. I would just like to thank you all for this opportunity, um, and I look forward to working with my fellow student trustee on making the ASOs more of a active influence in the community.
Thank you. Trustee Riley.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Just, just briefly, I, I'd just like to, uh, thank, uh, the Chancellor and, uh, and Dr. Carl for, uh, allowing me to attend the Alpha Kappa Alpha Scholarship Luncheon on its past Saturday, where they honored, uh, one of our past presidents, uh, Norma Jean Tucker, who was President of Merritt College from 1982 and to, for six years. She'd been in the district a number of years prior to that. It was an outstanding event. They raised, uh, uh, great funds for their, for their project, but it was just good to see her and for her to get her recognition. So, I want to thank you, and Chancellor, thank you for the resolution. Thanks.
Trustee Galasa.
Thank you. Just a very quick comment. First of all, a congratulations to our new student trustees, and then a comment on the trusteeship Program, Trusteeship for Excellence Program. Trustee Brown, you, Linda was a pushover. What about the rest of us guys up here? Just sit here and refuse to attend all of those conferences and fill out those forms, even though I was an advocate for it. Here I sit, I've yet to submit all this, but I will say, I took it all to my heart. I feel very wise, but, uh, I'm resisting that. I, I do want to send a note, uh, to my esteemed, uh, trustee leader, not trustee, sorry, I promoted you too soon, Matt Goldstein, the President of the Faculty Union. While I was in the other, uh, room, um, trying to avoid listening to someone talking, I checked my email and saw a note that, uh, a gentleman named Judge, Ralph True, has just declared a, uh, a number of, uh, things that you esteem, uh, like, uh, for example, the way faculty are laid off, the protections for the teacher, and above all, tenure, he has declared them, uh, illegal violation of the State of California Constitution. So, I wanted to, um, express my hope that when it comes to the burning of the union contracts, that you'd invite all the trustees, so they would rejoice, rejoice in the easy lifestyle we're gonna have up here. So, good luck. Okay? That's enough.
Alrighty then. Thank you. Thank you, guests. Trustee Galasa. Yeah, I think it's past our bedtime up here.
Somebody check that cup.
Uh, let's move on to the business of the meeting, which is the consent calendar. There are no items removed from the consent calendar this evening. There was a motion to approve the consent calendar. Moved by trustee Gonzalez Yen, seconded, is there a second? Seconded by trustee Brown. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. And I think that concludes the business portion of our meeting. At this point in time, are there any announcements?
Yes. President Guien, the next regular board meeting will be held in two weeks, on June 24th, here at the District Offices Boardroom. The district and colleges will be on summer four 10-day work schedule and closed on Fridays and weekends from June 13th through August 8th. Congratulations to trustee Guien on his recent birthday. And the board sends congratulations to Calvin Matlock, the IT and college teams for the successful recent upgrade of our PeopleSoft system, Danny Nguyen from Laney College on receiving the Performing Arts Award presented by San Francisco Mayor Ed Lee. And the board wishes everyone a Happy Father's Day on Sunday. And the board sends sympathy to the family and friends at Seattle Pacific University Community for their tragic and violent recent losses, and we may add to that, the, um, UC at Santa Barbara as well, um, for the incident that occurred near that university. Mr. President, that concludes the announcements for this evening.
Uh, thank you. The media, it, it's 9:13, and this meeting is adjourned.